In Town Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Sousa.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mallow.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
Consent agenda. Approval of executive session minute meetings. Council minute meetings, March 28, 2016. Approval of council special meeting minutes, February 29, 2016. Approval of regular council minute meetings, February 22, 2016. Approval of special council minute meetings, March 5, 2016. Received minutes from the following boards and commissions. Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission, Tree Commission, and Border Canvases Two. Correspondence received and filed. CRMC public notice application from Westport One Trust, 1660 Main Road, to construct and maintain a residential boating facility. Rosemary Probosco, Friends of the Tiverton Public Library, letter regarding new Tiverton Library. Boweryville Town Council Resolution, in support of legislation restoring funding for the state aid to libraries to the full 25 percent. Approval of the tax assessor's abatement. Town Council proclamation for Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, Saturday, April 30 through Saturday, May 7. Tiverton Garden Club, permission to hang two banners on town property for Tiverton Cleanup, week from Saturday, April 23 to Saturday, May 7, on fence of Bugamash Road Playground and at Town Farm Garden on Main Road. Approval of resolution in support of Budget Article 15 relating to municipalities and governors FY 2017 budget regarding statistical reevaluations. Town Planner Mark Russo, administrative report of activities for March 2016. Town Administrator Police and Fire Overtime Report for March 2016. Town Administrative Department's Monthly Report for March 2016. Joe Bossum, Cornell Road Noise from Windmill referred to Town Solicitor. Does any of the council like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President, I have three items. Number one, and that's really removed for some changes or clarification or corrections.
One. Which one?
One A, I'm sorry, one A. Three B, the Friends of Tiverton Library's letter. And number eight. Town Planner Mark Russo.
Anyone else? I'd like to remove...
Excuse me, Madam President. Just briefly, may I have CA 11 taken off also?
And I'd like to remove CA 5 and CA 7. Anyone else? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, taking those items out.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? CA 1A.
Madam President, that's simply to discuss some clarifications in executive session. It does relate to an executive session meeting, a minute.
So will...
The next item is item 3B. And 3B is the letter that we received from the library. I won't read it all, but I think it's important that we make it, that everyone understand that as a result of this new library, we're also having a tremendous increase in the use of the library, and people who have never used a library are now getting accustomed to using a library. And it's also becoming something of a community center. Let me just read a couple of lines. Individuals are using the library like never before. The latest report comparing monthly stats before and after the new library opening shows circulation up from 4,200 to 7,500. And that's the period from February 2015 to February 2016. Visits to the library, patron computer sessions, and virtual activity have all more than doubled. Going to another paragraph. It's not just individuals coming and going in person or online to get materials. Town boards and commissions are reserving meeting rooms. The Planning Board, Council on Aging and Economic Development, Open Space Commissions, and at least a dozen other local and state groups have done the same. The Tiverton Police are reserving library space for training and testing. The Town Municipal Court holds all of its sessions there now. Local nonprofits like the Scouts, the Tivertons, the Tiverton Lions Club, and the PTO groups are all meeting there. So I think it's important to emphasize on behalf of the library that the money, I know that there was some issue about the amount of money spent for a new library, but it's obviously serving the community and it's serving its purpose and doing an excellent job. The next item I just want, I wanted to take out, and hopefully this will be very brief, but it's number eight. And if our Town Planner, Mark Russo, could approach the podium, I'll put my question Mark, looking on the second page, and what I'm reading from is Mr. Russo's reports of his activities for March of 2016. And this is really an item that I wanted to make sure I understood and everybody in town understands. It reads on the second page, Major Subdivision Land Development. On March 29, 2016, issued a Certificate of Completeness for Tiverton Heights and Comprehensive Permit Application. 305 units are proposed on this 135.88 acre site bounded by Sousa Road and Fish Road. The Certificate of Completeness will allow the applicable time period for action to commence. My question is, in everyday language, Mr. Russo, exactly what does that mean?
That means, starting from March 29, there's 120 days. The Planning Board will have a public hearing on this application process and render a decision, unless there was an extension of time on that. Public official meeting will talk about all aspects of the project. There, as you said, there's 305 units being proposed. It's a mixed use of townhouses, single-family homes, condominiums. Also supposed to be deed restricted and part of a condominium agreement. We'll look at it very carefully with due diligence and have a number of experts weighing on review for the town.
I did come up with one more question. Is it still low-income and moderate-income housing under federal law?
25 percent will be for moderate income, as proposed.
Is he still under a federal statute at this point?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve C 3B and CA 7.
So moved.
Motion been made in second.
On seven.
Oh, CA 8. I'm sorry, CA 8. Motion been made in second. All those in favor? I wrote 8, I said 7 on this. CA 5. I'd like to read the proclamation. The Town Council had a regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, April 11, 2016. By motion made and unanimously passed, DPO claim at the request of the Tiverton Garden Club and Tiverton Litter Committee, Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, "Let's Lose the Litter" is what we call it, Saturday, April 30 through Saturday, May 7. Kickoff date for Cleanup Week commences on Saturday, April 30, 2016, from 9 to 2 at Gridhouse Beach Main Road. DPW approved bags are available for volunteers at the kickoff, and please bring your own gloves. Sponsored by the Tiverton Garden Club, Tiverton Litter Committee, who gratefully acknowledged the support of the DPW, Tiverton Town officials and staff, area businesses, and the dedicated volunteers who made this community-wide effort possible. By order of the Tiverton Town Council, Denise DiMederos, Town Council President, April 11, 2016. Any discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? CA 7, Approval of Resolution in Support of Budget Article 15 relating to municipalities and governors FY 2017 budget regarding statistical reevaluations. Resolution of the Tiverton Town Council in support of Budget 15 relating to municipalities of the governors FY 2017 budget. Whereas the Tiverton Town Council supports the issue of expanding the timeframe between state-mandated and statistical property reevaluations. And whereas, Article 15 of the governors FY 2017 budget will amend the requirement to revow property from three years to five years, thus saving the town and Tiverton approximately $400,000 over the next 17 years. And whereas, expanding the time between the statistical reevaluations from every three years to five years will not only help to relieve fiscal and administrative burdens on the town, but will help our taxpayers have a sense of property assessment and stability. Therefore, be resolved, the Tiverton Town Council joins with other cities and towns as well as concerned citizens, and hereby strongly urges passage of Article 15 by the Rhode Island Assembly during the 2016 legislation session. And be further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to our legislation delegates, all cities and towns of Rhode Island, and the governor requesting support in our mutual endeavor. Adopted and ordered this 11th day of April, 2016, Town, Tiverton Town Council President, Denise DiMederos. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. One is for the solicitor, and one is, is Dave Robert here?
Yeah.
Hey. The first question I have is just, playing this out in my head, if we extend the time period at which the value will be, for lack of a better term, stale, by two years, do you expect to have additional appeals in those outside years? It makes me wonder when, because we're going to be capturing more of a real estate cycle, and if you're stuck in a, if you're in, you know, if just so happens your valuation year falls on a year that's the height of the cycle, you're going to be taxed at the height of the cycle for five years instead of three now, or assessed, rather. So that leads me to think that potentially it opens us up to a little more exposure for appeals.
I think in the initial...
And I see Tony's head wagging back and forth.
Well, actually, may I?
Sure, sure.
Under current Rhode Island law, the lawsuit stems from the assessed valuation. There are some taxpayers in recent years, because there's been, you know, declining real estate values, they've made the allegation that each, even though you have to file for each year, it shouldn't go on the assessed valuation, it should go on the value for that year. So theoretically, you could claim a greater amount of damages in subsequent years in a falling real estate market. That has not been ruled on by the Rhode Island Supreme Court. Current law is, even though you have to file every year, and essentially it's a new case every year, you're still frozen at the fair market value for your property on the year of the valuation. That's the way the law stands now.
Yeah, so that was the, my second question was a legal one, that is, if theoretically you're supposed to be assessed on the fair market value, or no more than fair value of your property, where does it trigger the value to be pegged for a certain block of time? Or is that something, that's something that's, there's a statute, or is there a legal, I mean, what is the mechanism that allows this? Because theoretically, we should be assessing every year, because you could make the argument in year three, this is not currently the fair market value of my property, it's on a yearly basis.
The statutory language is, your, the value of your property is assessed on December 31 of the year last passed from the valuation. So whatever the value of your property was on December 31, that's what the assessed valuation is on the current cycle. It stays that way for the three years until there's either a statistical update or a full revaluation. So if you extend it out to the five years, the cycle would be the five years. Now, there are some of the larger taxpayers, I think, take a look at that, and if it's, as you say, a declining value, they're saying, I shouldn't be frozen on that date. Every year, you should look at the fair market value of my property and then match it against the assessed valuation there. I've had three cases that have gone to court on that, and the courts have declined to rule on that legal theory. So the current law is, your value, in terms of an appeal, is December 31 of the year last passed before the valuation.
And that could be one year, three years, five years, pretty much whatever you say.
Correct, yes. Correct.
Anything to add, Dave?
Well said.
So I guess just that...
So I do anticipate, if there was a case like that, where you're in a appreciating market and you have a revaluation, people knowing that they're going to be locked in for five years, you might have a greater number of appeals in that initial year, but then we always see, historically, they always trail off after that first initial year. So in years four and five, that would be added now, I don't anticipate that we would have many appeals after that third year.
Okay. I guess the only concern I have, and it's not 100 homeowners coming knocking on your door, it's the one major institutional taxpayer, or two major institutional taxpayers that could really not only be a burden for the tax assessor's office, but legal, our legal team as well. That takes a lot of effort and energy to fight multi-year, multimillion-dollar valuation appeals. So that's just my concern. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Dave, do you support this resolution? Or what is your feeling?
Professionally, not so much. The Assessors Association, this change has been bounced around for the last couple of years. So the Rhode Island Assessors Association, we're not truly in favor of it, because we want to try to mimic the market as frequently as possible. So we were always in favor of just keeping it at three years. There's a study done back in 96, I believe, that basically indicated that a more frequent revaluation is beneficial, and the homeowners are more understanding that we're trying to reach market value once every three years. We used to be once every 10. Connecticut and Massachusetts, they're three and five years. So going through a five-year revaluation, it's not terrible, it's a lot better than going back to 10. So we do understand the mechanics of it, and what's behind there is, you know, monetary savings. So anyways, to go back, the Assessors Association has always felt that the three-year cycle is better, so it does truly reflect market value or closer to it. But you have a flat market, five years is not going to matter too much, but you go through a thing that we did in mid-2000s where the appreciation was 14, 17 percent a year, you know, it is dramatic.
Any other questions? Want to prompt this resolution to be on our...
Counselor Sousa, I believe, for questioning.
If I could, please.
That's why I asked.
Well, we don't know what we're paying for the assessments. It used to be every 10 years, I believe. Now, I mean, if we need to tweak, I mean, I've been in and talked with, I guess the laws have changed a little bit, because I had to come into Town Hall and talk with the tax assessor about my property. I've been through the process a couple of times of trying to get my assessment lowered. You know, I left here with my blood pressure pumping. I mean, I couldn't use Massachusetts as an example, even though I live right on the state line and have, you know, there's rental property right on my road that's identical to mine. I felt that the process was unfair, so... But I think if we could work on, you know, if a large business in town feels as though the assessment is wrong, why fight them in court? Why not work with them first? I understand you can, but I always know we can negotiate something. I saw the battle we had with what's currently Tiverton Materials, where we spent a load of money in court and actually lost. So I don't know. I mean, maybe we need to look at the way we deal with business in town about the assessments and maybe look at that instead of just trying to fight it. That's my personal opinion, and I felt that way when I came in. So I felt that the assessment on my home was excessive, and it, when I looked at what properties were selling around me, and they were selling it far less than I was being appraised for. And that was probably close to 20 years ago when I first bought it. I haven't really fought it much since, because I think it's got a little better as far as the appraisals and what it's worth. Stretching this out, I think, where we used to be 10 years, I think, you know, we need to save money every way we can, and this was strictly to save money for the town.
Thank you.
I just want, I guess the argument, the point I was trying to make is, if you're in that situation in year one of a, see, in the old cycle, it'd be a 10-year cycle, but if it's a five-year cycle, and it is 2005 or 2006, and so you're paying probably five-year, in the fifth year, you're probably paying 25 to 30 percent more than your, you know, your assessment is more than it would have been otherwise, because you're at the high end of the cycle. And that's what I'm worried about, is if... If this is right, and we're going to save $400,000 over the next 17 years, that's $20,000 to $25,000 a year, we could, that could easily be eaten up in tax appeals on a high, on a bad cycle year. I don't know.
Depending on how we handle it. Sometimes it's cheaper to settle than go to court.
Well, even if you settle, you're still losing revenue.
I know, but you're giving somebody a fair value on their own, and that's the main, that's the whole purpose anyway. The town is not here to take your money, here, you know, it's fair and equal treatment for everybody. So if the assessment is high, and you can prove by, I mean, I go out and I get three appraisals on my property, and then come to Town Hall with three appraisals from people that are in the profession, and then I'm told, well, these don't really apply because this and that.
Well, that's...
And I ask, how did you get your, how did you make your assessment? Well, a house down the road sold for $500,000, like it applies to what I have.
But see, no, what I'm saying is, it's all about timing. If you come to the tax assessor's office and say, two years into the five-year evaluation cycle, and say there was a house next door that sold for 20 percent less than what I'm assessed at, that is an invalid data point, because your appraisal or your assessment was based on three and a half years prior. Even the day we're, even the day we get our assessment, it's a look back 12 months almost, in most cases.
I realize, but I don't think the market swings all that.
I don't mean to intrude on this, but the way it works is, when you get your revaluation, that's when there's the time to appeal under the statute. Actually, Brett's right. Two years out, three years out, you're too late.
I realize that, and the first thing I said was, maybe we need to look at the process, so that if I can commit an appeal...
I got it.
If there's a dramatic...
Then there's no point in setting a five-year schedule.
Most people, you know, I bet you, 98 percent of the people in this town probably just take their bill and pay it, and never even worry about the assessment. We're talking about people that have made larger homes and, I'll bet that.
But I'm saying, we do have some institutional users in this town, whether they're large-scale housing developments, or they're, you know, commercial buildings, that one appeal in one year can be a substantial amount of money, and it could eat away that, the value that we've, I'm not, I don't know that to be true, I'm just, that's what concerns me about pushing this out.
Joe, this is worse for the taxpayer. It is.
It is worse.
Because it forces them to have to appeal early.
Better for the town, because you save money, but it's worse for the taxpayer on a declining real estate market.
Yeah, well, how much more is the Rhode Island market going to decline? My God, my property in Portsmouth went down to 160, it was over 400 in 2000. How much more is the market going to decline?
We don't know that.
If anything, we, you know, I think the town thinks they're going to lose money as the market maybe starts to come up again if Rhode Island ever gets out of this recession. I don't know. I made my point. If you don't want to vote for it, don't vote, but I don't want to drag it out.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Do you want to make a motion to approve it?
Motion to forward this resolved to General Assembly?
I'll second it. Discussion.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? CA 11, Attorney DeSisto.
Thank you. I asked, just to make some brief comments on this, because Mr. Bossum is here. He had sent in a note to the Town Council on a particular issue regarding noise from a windmill near his property. I've taken a look at it, I've spoken to the gentleman. We're doing some research on it, and we'll contact him directly on it as to what, if anything, the town can do to alleviate the situation of this noise being generated because of the structure of the wind turbine.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Bossum? Did you hear what Mr. DeSisto said? Yeah, he didn't, he didn't get this. Joe, come up here for a minute.
Sure.
Please.
Mr. Bossum, we've, no, that's fine. We've discussed this. As I told you, we're going to be doing some research on this. We understand the noise situation because of the structure of the turbine, and I'll be contacting you directly with what, if anything, the town can do from a regulatory standpoint.
I approve your earlier discussion. I want to point out also that the local Realtors tell me my property value is significantly depreciated by the noise generated by the windmill. And I thank you for going ahead and looking at it. If you could get them to put a three-bladed prop in there, which I understand is much quieter, the people in Portsmouth don't mind theirs, then I would be in a... Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I just move that we refer that item to the solicitor.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to refer item CA 11 to the solicitor. All those in favor?
Opposed.
Councilman Shabbat.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move up item H1, Open Public Forum for Announcements, Comments, and Questions to this point in the meeting.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? At this time, I'd like to remind everyone that this is an open forum, that the council cannot comment, or what you say up here, or make any decisions, because this subject is not on the agenda. Attorney DeSisto, would you like to speak, or would you like me to have the people on my list speak first?
I have the public speak first, please.
Nick Prizio, Plantation Drive Sewer Assessment. Welcome.
Good evening, how are you?
State your name and address, please.
Absolutely. My name is Nick Prizio, I live on 13 Plantation Drive, Tiverton, Rhode Island. My wife and I officially closed our home on July 17, 2015, in the Plantation Drive development, which are going to be 14 houses. Under this purchase and sales agreement, we received an occupancy certificate based on a working water and sewer line. We pay our quarterly water and sewer bills timely in addition to our tax bills to the town of Tiverton. Our developer installed the sewer line at his own cost from an engineer who signed off on design and was inspected and authorized by the town of Tiverton in 2011. There is an email from the superintendent at the time that the development, developer, excuse me, that proves that the system was approved as is. There are only four homes currently in the development that is connected to this line, and there is no way that our current water sewer usage would cause this line to break. Even if it was deemed that the system was faulty, this is between the town of Tiverton and the developer. The town signed off on the original system, so why should us homeowners have to pay for a newly redesigned system? So I should probably, as a disclaimer to this, is that there was a meeting last week that the town was not present at, at the Tiverton Public Library on April 6, where the Tiverton Wastewater District assessed each individual homeowner of 14 houses $10,600 for a system that we did not install as homeowners. It was installed by a licensed engineer and developer, and was reviewed by the town and signed off. So as homeowners, we're extremely frustrated... So as homeowners, we're extremely frustrated that the town was not at the meeting, that we're being assessed something that was already working originally when we moved in. So that's why I'm here today. The road is considered private because the developer has not met all the requirements with the town. So we understand that. If you find any issues with the development, shouldn't the cost be taken out of the bond that you have with the developer directly, which there is in place? And I do have a copy from the Town Administration Office. He is respons, the developer is responsible for plowing the town, excuse me, plowing the street, and homeowners are responsible currently for bringing their trash to Bullfog Lane, because the town is, the street is not approved, which is also very frustrating to homeowners, since we're paying for taxes, and we're also paying for town trash bags. So because this issue is about a private drive, I understand it's not a town-approved street. So you might not feel that this issue pertains to you, but it really does, because you have new residents of Tiverton being assessed, $10,600. So if anything, the issue really is with your development team, excuse me, the developer of Plantation Drive, and not the homeowners, as we pay our taxes, and we own our particular house, and not the street, Plantation Drive. So if street repairs are needed, that should be funded by the town's taxes, and not asking for an assessment from the homeowners. I don't believe this is legal by any means. Secondly, this past summer, Fall River put in a new water and sewer line on Lake Road for their citizens. This was tied into our street. I understand this is a municipality agreement between the town of Tiverton and the city of Fall River. So I'd like to see a copy of this documentation, what I did request from the Town Clerk's Office, for proof of the documentation, and who authorized the connection. From my understanding, the system worked in Fall River, and as soon as it got to Plantation Drive, it failed. Again, this is not a homeowner issue. This is between the town of Tiverton, the city of Fall River, and the developer, as he owns the entire street. Lastly, I'd like to conclude is that we all bought homes on the existing and approved setup by the town of Tiverton. We, as homeowners, did not contribute to this non-working system. I appreciate that we're trying to get this fixed as soon as possible. And to elaborate on that, construction is starting today. We were notified April 6th, and construction is starting today because it is deemed a public and health and safety issue by the Wastewater District, which was formerly apart in 2011, the town of Tiverton, which is, past year and a half, they have separated. If needed, the homeowners that are here tonight, we gladly get an attorney involved, as there should be no cost implication on the home or landowners of Plantation Drive. The cost agreed upon, the purchase and sales agreement, for each land or home purchase is based on a working sewer line. So if it fails, that is on the town to pay, since they authorized the original working system. And it's up to you if you want to go out to the developer or not, or the engineer, or whatever the fault may be, but that is on the town. It is not the citizens' fault of Plantation Drive that there was a non-working system several years after the fact. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I did have a question.
Ask Tony. Brian Faulkner. And I, I'm sorry if I didn't say your name right. I can't read your writing.
Hi, I'm Brian Faulkner. Faulkner. I bought property also.
Address, please. Address, please.
Oh, 14 Plantation Drive, same development, Whatupa Pla, Plantation. I bought property in September 2015, that is located on the Whatupa Plantation Development. We received a letter from the Tiverton Wastewater District dated March 30, 2016, informing us that our sewer system for our properties within Whatupa Pla Plantation has experienced a significant failure. Tiverton Wastewater contracted with an engineering firm to investigate the cause of the failure and devise a permanent solution. We, as homeowners, attended a public information meeting last Wednesday, April 6th, at the Tiverton Library, hosted by the Tiverton Wastewater District, to learn about the next step. At this meeting, we were informed that each property owner in the development would be responsible for a portion of the newly designed constructed sewer system, and would be assessed the cost of $10,642 per lot, plus $110 per bedroom for Fall River permits. In addition, a lien would be placed on our properties, and work would begin today, Monday, April 11, 2016. We don't feel that the property owners should be responsible for the cost. Each, you know, we each bought a piece of property with the understanding that the sewer was tied into the town. We feel that the town of Tiverton and/or the developer and engineers should be responsible for the cost, since they inspected and approved the current system and allowed us to occupy our properties. The residents of Whatupa Pla Plantation are requesting to be put on the agenda, which we are. I thank you for that, to, you know, and hopefully we can come up with an alternative resolution or, you know, get this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Faraz.
Yep, Eric Faraz, 37 Plantation Drive. I don't have much to say. I bought property there about a year ago. We're in the building process, and I as well received a letter saying that I owe the, I owe $10,600. If I don't pay the $10,600 for a broken sewer that I've yet to use, a lien will be put on my property. And until I pay the money, I will not be able to connect to the water system. And I just, I don't understand how, how that can happen. So I'm just seeking some answers.
Thank you. Attorney De Sisto.
Well, I'm aware of the situation, and I've been in contact with the attorney for the developer, and there are some proposals out there to remedy this situation. I will agree that the homeowners should have no liability here. And there are other liability questions. Town is working as best they can to make sure that this fix that's going on right now gets funded and gets funded properly. And I expect that we will have some answers within the next few weeks. But I will say that the primary responsibility here is for the, for the person that installed it, and also the person that has profited from it by taking the homeowner's money for these things. Because one of the things that happened here is that they got warranty deeds, and that was something that they need to do. Now, the town is going to cooperate and do all that they can to get this fixed, okay? But I want to make sure that it's a fair settlement for everybody, including the taxpayers.
I just had one question. What is the total amount of controversy right now? It should be.
About $140,000.
$150,000. It's actually $150,000, $150,000 that was just approved by the Tiverton Wastewater District. There was just a meeting at the Town Water Department, and that got approved.
Thank you. $150,000.
And to have another moment, is that possible? Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
You said in the few coming weeks, and from my understanding, I'm talking to the Tiverton Wastewater District, that assessment bill is coming as soon as the project is completed, which is in three to four weeks. So when you say it's a couple of weeks, my, that bill's coming to me no matter what. So a lot of, we have a lot of families in that neighborhood that don't have that kind of money to spend, which we're paying our tax money to pay for the Tiverton Public School District, the Tiverton Public Library, things of that nature that our kids are trying to utilize. So it really is in everyone's best interest to, like I said, get a quick resolution, not a couple of weeks, I'm thinking a week, which I know it's a lot to ask, and I'm, I'm not trying to be brash, but this is our livelihood. We work hard, we pay taxes to the town of Tiverton. I'm new to the area, I'm very excited to be here, live in a great neighborhood, but it's an unfortunate circumstance, I agree. There's a lot of liability going around, but I really appreciate you working with my developer to get this settled as soon as possible. Thank you.
I just have a quick, quick question. How many, Tony, how many sold lots are there that are in, in private hands now, in that development?
Must be four.
I think there's. There's four?
No.
I beg, I beg your.
I don't know the exact answer, but there's four.
Nobody does. There's four COs.
Okay, there's four houses. Okay, yeah. But there are how many lots? Fifteen?
Fourteen.
Okay. And you've reviewed the deeds on these, and their general warranty deeds?
Yeah. And by the way, there's an applied warranty of habitability, too.
Yeah, okay.
So, and there's also issues of comparative negligence. There's a lot of things on legalities that need to be smoothed out, but we've had our discussions, and they're going to be continued. I understand the timetable, we'll work as quick as we can.
I just, just another question. It seems like everybody was well aware of what was going on before they came up to a solution, per the, the water department, per, I mean, you spoke and said you knew what was going on. When, who came to the solution that the, well, the best solution would be to put this on the homeowners? If everybody's well aware that this is crazy, and there shouldn't be any liability to the homeowners, why are we here tonight? Why have I wasted two weeks of my time because I got a bill in the mail, when everybody that was well aware of what happened is not taking any responsibility? But now, tonight, last Tuesday or Wednesday night, it was all on us. Now everybody agrees that it shouldn't be on us, and we're working towards a solution. Why was it put on us in the first place?
Well, I can't speak for the Tiverton Wastewater District, but I can tell you that the town has always, the town has always wanted to participate in a settlement of this matter, and the question now is to make sure that the developer does also.
How much has the town said that they wanted to help out? How much have you? The Wastewater Department said, if we had the money in our bank account, we would pay for it. So I said, well, how much do you have in your bank account? Can you pay for a little bit of it? Can you pay for 50%? No, we can't. That's on the town, and that's on the developer. Well, tonight, as we stand, I've been to two meetings, and everybody agrees that it's not our responsibility, yet there's still a $10,000 bill hanging over our heads, and two weeks of my time wasted, standing in front of people that agree that this is absurd.
Yeah, I can't, I don't represent the Tiverton Wastewater District, so I can't speak for them, and I won't.
I'm not asking for their opinion, I'm asking for yours. What made you think that this would be a good idea to put it on the residents?
It's not my idea. I don't represent the Tiverton Wastewater.
It's Tiverton Wastewater that did it. It's Tiverton Wastewater that decided to do that.
But did they go to the town and say, this is our, they, they had a solution, they had this nice presentation, they said, I'm sure they presented you with the solution.
I will. The Tiverton Wastewater is a separate entity from the town of Tiverton. You understand that.
My question is, did they present you with the solution to the problem before they presented it to the residents?
They didn't, they didn't present it to us at all, because we don't have a say in it. We have nothing to do with it. I know.
Okay.
Mr. De Sisto.
I'm just asking, what solution?
Just to put these people at some ease, I think, and I don't pretend to be a real estate lawyer, but it seems to me at this point that they have warranties, they'll have a bond, and I don't know how much money is in the bond, and the developer still has real property that's subject to attachment. If you can't get $140,000 out of that, you're not really trying very hard.
And that's my point.
When I say they, I don't, I'm not referring to you, Tony.
As an academic thing, do they have lawsuits?
Yeah.
They don't want to sue. They want it settled now, and that's what we're trying to do, so it doesn't get to that point.
And let me, can I just pop in? Because we have these different entities, and they sort of operate, the Tiverton Wastewater District is, is not an arm of the town. We don't have to approve, they don't have to ask for permission, they can do what, what they're legally allowed to do in sort of an autonomous space. What I think we're trying to do, and as, especially as a town council, because we have really no authority over these matters, is to play matchmakers, to get everybody talking, to get everybody sitting down at the table, to figure out what, from our end, legal action needs to be taken, and to get, whether there's a bond in play, a property that, excuse me, a property the developer owns, and assets the developer owns, to get, get this resolved.
So you're being reactive now. My only question is, again, Mr. Lambert spoke about these deeds that were, we hear about now that were in place, I mean, I'm sure we didn't hear about them now. Did the Tiverton Wastewater Department present to you the solution to this environmental emergency before?
They never spoke to the town council.
So they said, I have a $150,000 bill.
They said nothing.
They said nothing.
Okay, okay.
Because they.